I will call it order, a meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Licensing Commissioners for the Town of North Andover, Monday, November 30, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the November 16, 2015, open session minutes as written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The one night. Because there are, all the fantasies are in town tonight. Communications and announcements. The Government Finance Officers Association has awarded us yet again, yes?
For the fourth year in a row, the, led by Finance Director Lynn Savitz, the Governor Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, has recognized our budget with the distinguished budget presentation award. It's emblematic of a budget that not only is a financial document, but a communication tool and an opportunity, a strategic planning device as well. I think it, for those who've had an opportunity to read through our budget, all 200 pages or so of it, especially Tim, who is our in-house editor of the document on occasion, we certainly appreciate the efforts of Lynn Savitz in her crowd to make sure that we are represented well in terms of the document that gets relayed to our public. It's important that we communicate with our residents, not just numbers on a page, but also the context in which those numbers are approved. So we very much appreciate her efforts and applaud the recognition.
Four years in a row, it's outstanding. Lynn, the Town of North Andover is lucky to have Lynn and yourself and our whole team. But four years, that's great. It's good stuff. We also have additional good stuff this evening, new business recognition, which would be Dottie's Delights. Come on up.
Where is this?
Right up here to the podium, hon, sorry.
Hello. I have come up.
Why don't you introduce yourself, tell us what your new business is, hours, the whole deal.
I can do that. Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you for inviting me and having me. My name is Alyssa Cohen and I am the owner of Dottie's Delights. We are located in the Jasmine Plaza, adjacent to the Stop &amp; Shop, where the Dunkin' Donuts is, in case there's any questions, because everybody knows where that is. And we specialize in basically happiness that you can eat, or give, or make. Whether you're looking for chocolate that pairs beautifully with wine, or that hard-to-find color sprinkles, or handcrafted caramel with organic cane sugar, or anything in between, that's sort of what we have and who we are. And it's same for my grandmother, so we definitely have the family tradition that seems to be very much appreciated in North Andover. So that's a little bit about us. We're open every day, but Monday, the hours tend to be 11 to 5:30. Saturdays and Sundays, or sorry, Fridays and Saturdays, an extra hour, 6:30. And Sundays, an hour earlier, 4:30. But the secret is, I'm in there a little early, around 6:00, so if you knock on the door, I'm probably there. So that's sort of who we are and where we are. Do we what?
Have chocolate emergency.
Yes, absolutely.
That is fantastic, and we'd like to...
It's official!
Yeah, I know. It's a certificate of appreciation for placing your business here in the Town of North Andover. We thank you and we wish you much, much luck.
Thank you so much.
Well, that's what we like.
Thank you.
So, moving on to job posting and vacancy log, but we should probably let her know she doesn't have to stay the whole meeting.
I've already informed her.
Oh, okay.
Yes, she has another engagement anyway.
Okay, good, thank you. Would you like to go over the job posting and vacancy log?
I will entertain any questions associated with the job vacancy posting log.
All jobs around the website?
Job posting and vacancy log, yes. If the position is still being recruited, yes.
Tree climber position.
Tree climber is remarkably difficult. If anybody knows of someone who is a certified tree climber, we would appreciate it. We're struggling with trying to find a replacement.
There's a certification for that, really?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not surprised.
They also assist in hanging wreaths as a side light.
They're getting up, but...
I think it's great. I mean, they're up and it looks great.
They're up, we have a few more though, for those of you who don't see your name up in lights, it's coming, next couple of days.
So we are actively pursuing through recruitment phase a new treasurer-collector.
Yes.
And we are in the process of interviewing and going through the evaluation of candidates to replace the veterans. Those are the larger two of them. In addition to the tree climber position, those are the more significant ones.
Super. Great. I'm actually going to use Chairman's prerogative, and can we quickly go through consent items into the public hearing? Is that okay?
You just have to leave A behind.
Leave A behind and then, oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to move to consent items B, appointment of Matthew Rock to the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission.
So Matthew Pad met with us. He's a younger guy in his early 30s, doesn't live in the district, but lives adjacent, he lives on Columbia Road, which, if you know where that is, it's right off of Sutton Street, right before you take a right onto Chadwick. Had a strong interest in getting involved with that particular neighborhood, saw a lot of potential with that district, open-minded, intelligent guy who is a lifelong resident that I think the subcommittee as a whole felt would be a great addition.
He doesn't live in the district, but he actually grew up right next to the district, and so he's pretty familiar with it. And he was, yeah, great enthusiasm. I think he'll be a great asset to the committee.
Super. Do I have a motion for his appointment?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Matthew Rock.
Great to see the people getting involved.
Yeah, it's fantastic. We have...
So Madam Chairman, I received a request from Lisa Morelli, who's the director of the Andovers Credit Union, which is Andover and North Andover.
I noticed there was an S missing, and I was like, well, maybe we won't do that. Will we, Donnie?
We're working on that.
We wait for the non-Andover.
Is that half the fee?
Wait, wait.
So, as many people know and those who do not, the Andovers Credit, Federal Credit Union, has purchased the former Valles property on Main Street, so will be transforming that storefront into, moving out of Town Hall, which I think is a real positive step for the credit union itself. They have two other branches located in Andover, so they've begun work, they've received their permits, they're proceeding aggressively toward renovating that space. Should move in around March 1st, they'll occupy the space in this building until that date. And Lisa Morelli requested that the board, respectfully requested that the board waive the building permit fee, given their nonprofit status and the fact that they're working aggressively to improve Main Street.
I move approval of the Andovers Credit Union to waive their fee.
All those in favor?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
No.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Should I have, I feel bad, I feel like I jumped too quickly and we should have had discussions, so my apologies.
No, I think that this was, I mean, the vote is what it is. I felt like this was a bank that is now going to be on, well, it's a credit union that's now going to be on Main Street. I'm grateful that they took over that site. Feel that it's a cost of doing business, these permit fees. So, I'm glad that they're on Main Street, but we've had plenty of banks and credit unions come to North Andover and have to pay similar fees if they wanted to do renovations, and so I felt for the sake of consistency.
Except it's a nonprofit.
I realize that, but it is still a credit union, whereas we have other banking institutions in town that have made substantial investments as well in our community. And so I respectfully vote no.
And, you know, I went through some of the logic, but then thinking it's a nonprofit and also that it services the town employees from both Andover and North Andover, well, I should say North Andover and Andover. I think that made me think differently about it, as a service to the employees and a nonprofit organization.
Respect that.
Agreed. Well, my apologies for jumping too quickly ahead and not allowing discussion, but we had discussion and, you know, moving on to winter parking ban.
Winter parking ban. Madam Chairman, we have the information from the police chief suggesting that the winter parking ban, since we're taking it up at this late day, we normally begin on December 1st, I've moved that date back to December 7th, I felt safe from the forecast that we weren't going to have any need for the winter parking ban. So we'll begin that winter parking ban on December 7th, if the board approves the recommendation of the police chief and I, and begin the notification process to the public.
I can't remember what the parking for Ashland Street was, but they are now missing five or six more spots, so it's going to be a lot more trucks out there. They can't pull up where they used to when they're building the building. They get three or four trucks there tonight, but usually they put about 10 there, so I don't know where the other seven are going to go.
They're on the odd side, I'm amazed with their setup, is what the approval would be for. On the odd side, that's going to be the side opposite the school, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the backside, yeah.
So that's the way that would be?
But what I'm saying, from last year, there's going to be more trucks there because they used to parallel park with our fences. Now they've got two or three trucks, we used to have eight or nine, so where the extra trucks and cars are going to go? I don't know. It's pretty tight down there. But that's, you know, that's up for the police to figure out.
So it's duly noted, if it's a problem, then the town may have to...
Just tell the police chief to make note of that and see if there's any problems with that. Goes.
I move approval, and also noting that the streets that are listed are generally because it's a hardship, it's just where the houses are built and the lots are small and...
Please note on that, that's through February, the end of February, and we'll take, we'll reconsider where we stand relative to the winter and come back to the board at that point.
Hopefully no extensions this year. We have a...
You mean again and again?
Yeah. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, we have a donation of $540 from the North Andover Merchants Association to the fire department. Dawn and Chris.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dawn Pease, I'm the president of the North Andover Merchants Association. This is Chris Palermo, who is the secretary of North Andover Merchants. We would like to be able to donate $540 to firefighters' Fire Safety Week. Every year, they put on quite a show for the kids, and there's a lot of expenses associated with it, and the one that we'd like to cover and that we've covered in years past is the kits for the kids that have the little hats and the belts and the badges and the coloring book. We did it last year and we'd be more than happy to do it again this year.
It's great. It's great. Merchants Association, since its inception, three original members on this board, and it's, every year, I just applaud everything that you guys do, and this in particular too. Do I have a motion for acceptance?
I'll move, even though that there's four of us who are members...
Four, did I say three? I'm so sorry.
That's all right, that's okay. No, no, no problem.
I'm having a bad night. I'm really having a bad night tonight.
Not offended, but, so, we have to take the exception and vote on this, even though there's four members, so I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And see you tomorrow.
Chairman, move the license.
Ha ha. No license.
I know, I tried.
So I do need a motion, though, to move into public hearing, right?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the purpose of the property tax classification.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in the hearing.
Madam Chairman, your package is material also available to the public, provided by Sussa Garrett Bowles, that outlines of the calculations associated with helping the board make a decision regarding the residential factor for fiscal '16. A repeat of the obvious, what you're doing today is really determining the allocation of the tax levy between residential property and personal and commercial property for fiscal '16. This isn't about fiscal '17, which is next year. This is about allocating the levy between the different classifications of real estate. The calculations in front of you give you a sense and idea of what those calculations should look like. It has been the general direction of the board over the last several years to Garrett and I, that we maintain the percentage relationship between residential property and commercial property. I'm summarizing commercial as commercial, industrial, and personal property. So that, up until about 2011, I'm going to be slightly wrong about this, the relationship without, on a one-to-one tax rate basis, so if the commercial rate and the residential rate were the same, that the residential taxpayer would bear 87% of the total tax levy, therefore leaving the other parts of commercial, industrial, and personal property at about 13%. Back in '11 or fiscal '11 or fiscal '12, that relationship, that was the percentage relationship without any shift, the factor's been in place for a couple of decades, as far as I understand it. So the goal since that point is to keep that relationship approximately the same. In that particular year, the residential factor was set so that approximately 4% of the tax levy was shifted from the residential properties to the commercial properties, so changing the 87-13 relationship to an 83-17 relationship. That's been the, that was the practice that we began several years ago. So every year, as Garrett and I work on this paperwork, we try to, I take Garrett's calculations in turn, try to sort of line out that factor, which yields that same result. This year is no different. The information you have in front of you, with a factor of 1.36, basically 136%, right, results in approximately that same allocation of the tax levy, moving 87% residential taxes and making that 83% borne by the residential taxpayer, and the 17% being borne by the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayer. All the documents that you have are associated with that residential factor of 1.36 and yield the result that I identified. In this particular year, we saw a growth, there's a cover letter that was submitted and also posted on the assessors' website after the completion of the most recent factoring through this fiscal year, which was adopted by the state, that all levels, all categories of real estate have increased. I'll summarize that again as being condominiums, single-family homes, multifamily homes, small and large on the residential side, and commercial properties. There was pretty wide variation, though, as it relates to the value increase. The residential properties grew modestly, I think at .48%, while condominiums saw a significant growth, north of 10%, I think close to the 13%, 13.5% range. Small multifamilies, which are two or three-unit buildings, grew more substantially, and large multifamilies had a modest increase, I think just north of 3%. Garrett can certainly correct my numbers, but somewhere in that range. The result, and there's also an increase in the commercial, industrial category, but again, in the more modest, just north of 2% range. The result is that we're seeing a, under this factor rate, we're seeing a decrease in the tax bill to the residential, single-family home residential taxpayer, but an increase on the commercial side, and an increase within the residential category of the condos and small multis. You're also seeing an increase on the large multis, but the small multis and condos are the ones sort of bearing the change more substantially. So, again, the information you have in front of you, and Garrett can elaborate in more detail, was provided to keep consistent that practice we began several years ago of keeping the percentage, percentage relationship of tax levy at approximately 83% residential and 17% commercial.
The format I have is the one I've been using for several years. The first two pages are the base, with no shift over to the commercial, so you end up with a tax rate that is the same for both, all classes of property. The next two pages, as the manager said, was the factor which would preserve most closely the distribution, which has been your policy for the last several years, 17% to the sip, commercial, industrial, personal property, and 83% to the residential classes. The fifth page is a little hard to read, but it lets you go down and see every single potential tax rate you can vote. And North Andover is, can go up to 150% shift. The, I've highlighted, as I usually do, the base and then the suggested shift, so it's easy to get off of that page. The last three pages are the quartile analyses, and what they do is they compare the quartiles between the residential class and the commercial, industrial, and the commercial portion of the mixed use. And I just want to point something out for those that aren't familiar with this report. The reason the first quartile is so low is that, on the residential side, it contains mostly condominiums and vacant lots, because it's stratified by value. On the commercial side, it contains the chapter land, and that's, that's the three different classes, forestry, agricultural, or open space residential, which have a non-market For instance, agricultural is, you're given a set of per-acre values, which are extremely low, they usually go down to $50 an acre, full value. So, we do have a lot of chapter properties in North Andover, believe it or not. You still have a lot of farm property. So that's why you usually have a median in that first quartile on the commercial side of $1,000, because that's really looking. Chapter land is by law assessed at the commercial tax rate. That's part of the scheme, that the value would be reduced, but it would be applied to the commercial rate if you had a commercial tax rate. The median went up slightly for residential, or single-family, it only, it went up about a couple of thousand dollars. So with the slight decrease in the tax rate, that would end up with, when you compare the median bill last year with the median bill this year, you'd have a $33 reduction at the proposed rate. You made mention of the two classes, the, when you do the revaluation, you have to look at all the groups and subgroups of property, and property, there are various markets within the residential class. The condominiums, when the recession happened a few years ago, the condominiums were hit very hard. I can think of one which isn't very far from here, where they had a lot of foreclosures, they had a lot of turnover because the place was brought online in the mid-1990s, and by that, by now, the people that originally bought in, they were retirees, were either leaving or died. So, they were inordinately affected by the recession, and they've recovered. So, there came back, their sales prices, they're done on their sales prices, so are the single-family homes, by analyzing the sales prices. So those condominiums, from a sales price standpoint, a lot of them came back quite strongly. Within the single-family home demographic, the greatest inflation was in the first two quartiles. When you get into the upper two quartiles, I think Rosemary can validate this, when you're in, when you're up around the, you know, high six figures, low seven figures, there's, there's a smaller buyer pool, and they don't tend to move. When they move, they move, but they don't, there aren't too many people that can afford those, and they don't move as quickly as they would in the 300,000 to 500,000, you know, demographic. So, that's, one of the things you look at, is you stratify things by price quartiles, and there's a whole set of statistics we have to pass, which we did, and that, so the idea is you try not just to make general adjustments to the classes like you do in the interim year adjustment class years, but you go into the, into each class and make sure that the values are accurate enough so that the tax burden is distributed uniformly, and the law says you have to be at full and fair cash value. And I think, as a class, the two families which were negatively impacted by the recession have come back. We've lost to two of the two families this year, they were converted to condominiums this past year. So that, that style, I had heavily discounted the last couple of years, and I had to take the discount off. So that's, that's the, that's the reason for that. I analyze the sales every year, and I do the same analysis every year that I would do for the revale. And because I want, first of all, you don't want to let the sales market get ahead of you, and secondly, I want to try to distribute the tax burden as fairly as possible according to what the rules are. And if you're, you know, you go up, you have to go up. You're given about a 10% margin of error, and if you go down, I follow the market down. And the last, I can tell you right now, I've already done a preliminary ratio study on the first 10 months of 2015, which would be for fiscal '17, and our median for single families is already down to 93, and I was certified on 97. So, it's still going up, but that's something we'll talk about next year. So are there any questions?
I just wanted to comment a little bit about, you know, the increase in condos and multifamilies, and it's, you haven't even probably even seen the real numbers yet, as you just said, I think they're still forthcoming, it's a very strong market, mostly because the rental market is so strong. So that you're finding people who were paying, you know, for a two-bedroom, $1,800 to $2,000, well now they're, they're saving their money and buying a condo, and it's also increased greatly the value of multifamilies, even multifamilies that need work. So that's the good news, bad news. The good news is, your property has gone up in value. The bad news is, your taxes will also go up.
Yeah, there's a redistribution, and at least in an upmarket, the people who choose no longer to rent but to buy, get the benefit of the tax deductions, which they wouldn't necessarily get.
And with the interest rates still so low, they can literally rent cheaper than, I mean, literally buy cheaper than it is to rent.
Yeah, there is a terrible shortage of rental property.
That's right. So, but I think everything you said is accurate, and I think, the only thing I would say that in the right neighborhood, even a $650,000 home will move pretty quickly. Again, mainly because of the interest rates, it's much more affordable than in years past. But...
Garrett, last year, when we went through classification, I recall there was in, with Schneider and Converse moving out, there was a certain tax base that was lost there in that commercial side. Has some of that come back now with the redevelopment of the mills?
Well, they're, they're in the process. I think they're pretty much vacant right now, but yeah, when that comes back, we'll, we'll look at it, and, you know, when they run up, I mean, that type of property is based on its income stream. And if they're in the process of, you know, rehabbing and have a high vacancy rate, you really can't hypothesize an income stream of something that isn't there. So what we did with them is they had filed an appeal, and I think the same person owns both the North and South Mill now. And as they come back, that will be addressed, and that will, we won't wait for a revale year. If they finish it in a year, then it'll, it'll be done on an income valuation with, using the tables that were developed for this cycle. But it's, it's something that has to wait for, it's pretty difficult when something is in transition like that, to try to assess it as if it were a growing concern when it isn't. You're not going to get very far in court. So it doesn't, it doesn't do the bottom line of the town any good by chasing something which, a couple of years down the road, will be new growth anyway, and you'll be in a better position to defend.
Yeah, but as I recall, that was one of the drivers that went from 1.29 last year to 1.34, was because of that loss of the tax base, and that was one of our concerns...
I think their assessment, I can check it, I don't think it changed that much because of the fact that Converse moved out by the end of last, last summer, I think a year ago last summer. They had the pleasure of driving by their new building on the way down to the... They had the pleasure of driving by their new building on the way down to the appellate tax board. You can see it from the bridge.
Any other questions for Garrett?
Just one last comment that probably won't like, but those who find a mistake in their tax bill have till when to file for an abatement? The end of January?
They have the February 1st.
February 1st.
February 1st. And I'll even go one better to show how fair I am. If you can't make it into the town hall, make sure it's postmarked by the U.S. Postal Service by February 1st.
So people need to be aware, if you miss that date, you've missed out.
Yeah, if we get it with a postmark, and it has to be a USPS postmark. It can't be just a Pitney Bow stamp.
Not neither. So again, if you find a mistake, you do need to act on it.
If you want to challenge values, mistake in a tax bill that's, and I'm not correcting you, I'm just so the public knows.
Right.
An error in the tax bill that's a function of a calculation can be corrected at any time. One that's a function of questioning the value that's been assigned to your property, postmarked by February 1st.
Right.
We know of a mistake that needs to be corrected because it missed.
Okay.
No, you're right, it was both.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm Joe Bevalaco from the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce. We proudly serve your community and congratulate you on the very positive growth and development that's taken place. I want to say thank you to your manager for being so cooperative and working with the business community. It's critically important that the town exhibit a sense of welcome to business, not just the existing companies, but those companies that are on their way coming here. And I just want to say thank you once again to your manager and wish you both well, the board and the manager, as we go forward. You have our communication, and I know you have a busy evening tonight, so we won't repeat what we said in our communication. We simply want you to be aware of the impact upon business and both industry. And I know you are, and I've heard the discussions, and I want to say thank you for providing a fair balance in terms of the business industrial community. So thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak in regards to this? Okay. Any other further comments from the board?
Move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor? Aye. The hearing is now closed. And we will go backwards or forward, back to consent. To A.
So are we going to throw in our opinions, or how do you want to manage this?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, yes, we will have a discussion. We're having a really off evening, off evening.
Yes, how do you want to do this?
And I said, yes, yes, yes.
I assume she said yes to starting the discussion.
That's right. I'm tired.
So my thought is to keep the split as it was last year at 1.34. I think that keeps it also at that equitable levels without adversely affecting either category. So my, my opinion would be to keep it. And no, I'd go to the one, I know there's a recommendation or there's some calculations that have been done with increasing it to a 1.36 split, but mine would be, my opinion would be to keep it at that 1.34, as we did last year.
The move to 1.36 though, Harvard, I mean, albeit a small one, it does reduce the residential tax bill for the median household.
For the median house, single-family household.
For the median, single-family household.
For the median condo homeowner, increasing that tax rate by, or the tax is the annual tax bill by 13.72%, which I think that most of the individuals who are living in those units, as Rosemary said, are people who are doing it because of the affordability. It provides a great opportunity for younger folks who want to stay in town but can't afford $600,000 to continue living in the community perhaps where they grew up or where they want to start raising their family. And reducing the shift from 1.36 to 1.34 would, Mr. Manager, how much would that, do you have the data for how much the percentage would be for the median residential condo owner?
For residential condo, it would be 13.3%. So it would be...
I have a going up to 14.07 from what was, from the, oh, I'm looking at the... So going from 1.36 to 1.34 increases the condominiums from a 13.72% increase to a 14.07? No, lowering the factor would increase the residential side.
Yeah, that's what...
No, so what Dick is, what Dick is, no, what Dick is suggesting is that by lowering the shift to 1.34, we would be increasing taxes on residents.
Correct. Including the condo.
Exactly. So we're already at 13.72% for that, that group of homeowners.
And it would bump it to 14.47.
14.07, yeah.
Well, the 1.36% split, if you were to group, I appreciate, Mr. Townman, I don't remember last year's presentation, but I appreciate that you split the condo from the single-family house because it gives us, I think, a good perspective. If you were to group the single-family and residential condos, excuse me, together, the percentage increase in taxes collectively is approximately the same, correct, as the percentage increase on industrial homeowners, industrial property owners.
What's the question again?
So it's, it's two, rate is at 2.19 and 2.22%?
Under what scenario?
Under the current, under the 1.36 split.
Under 1.36 split, since the percentages remained approximately the same as to last year, the initial dollars raised by the levy are split almost equally between commercial, industrial, and personal on one side and residential on the other, approximately 3.2% each. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I wanted for clarification because it was something that you were, you were very generous with your time last week with, with walking me through this, this being my first time. And I felt that, I mean, it's, it seems to treat single-family homeowners, I think, fairly. I think that the commercial and industrial property owners with a 1.36 split are still treated fairly when you consider that there's still a significant burden placed on individuals who own property in the first quartile, which I think we could argue are probably the ones at the lower end of the economic spectrum. And that's, that's, I mean, that's outside of our control as far as the increase, the increase is a result of the median value. It's those people's investments increasing. But still, as a result of that investment, appreciating, we're looking at a 13.72% increase.
Yeah, I guess my other point is I just see that we, we bumped it last year from 1.29, 1.29 to 1.34 for, well, on the industrial side, the business side, and now we're inching it up again to 1.36. It seems like every year, you know, we keep inching that up a little bit. I thought, you know, let's keep it at where it is, 1.34. I don't think it makes a huge difference in either way. It kind of keeps everything in parity, in my opinion.
This is for you folks to decide, but the reason to 1.36 from 1.34 previously from 1.29 was so the percentage allocation between residential and commercial remain exactly the same. The factor changes because the, there's an appreciation or lack thereof of the different category. So in this particular year, because the values changed to a certain degree, the factor had to go from 1.34 to 1.36 to leave the percentage relationship of the levy the same. So not increasing it to 1.36 doesn't leave the relationship the same. Doesn't mean you have to, I'm just...
For lack of a better word, it gives the other, one side a discount over the other, an increase.
Well, I mean, it's, if you're the beneficiary, if you're owning a half million dollar or approximately a half million dollar home, I mean, you do end up seeing a 33. Your taxes drop because you haven't seen the appreciation of your investment to the degree individuals and, well, smaller houses have. I mean, I don't, I wish I had the demographic data. I would imagine most of the people occupying the space that's already seeing a 13.72% increase are either young families or senior citizens on a limited income.
And I don't have the data in front of me, maybe Garrett does, but within the residential class, I would certainly say in the last five years, within the residential class, it's the single-family house that has seen the greater appreciation than the condos and the multis. It's, it's, the condos and multis are now sort of catching up, right?
Yeah, so in essence, the, if the single-family home during the lean years for the condos and the multis were probably carrying a little bit more of the water. But again, it's only based on value, so it's sort of an odd statement to make. When the condos and the multifamilies weren't doing as well, when you do, you know, the pot of the burden goes to the single-family. The thing is, you can't separate each category. There's either residential, which includes all residential, and then there's commercial, industrial, and personal property. So it's, it'd be, it would be interesting if you could kind of have every single category level out, but it doesn't work like that.
No, and, so, and what's the percentage increase though, the average property tax bill increase if we were to return? I mean, I know what's in here, but it's just, I know you have a...
So if you have the material in front of you that tells you what a 1.36 factor would be, that's $33 decrease in the single-family, the median single-family home. It's a $144 increase in the median commercial industrial property. It is a $296 increase in the residential condominium. And it is a $756 increase in the median small multifamily, that's two or three units, and $229 for the large multifamily above three units. That's, that's at 1.36. So that's the material you have in front of you. At 1.34, to what Mr. Valancourt identified, Dick, you'll double-check me, I'm sure, to make sure I've got this right. Okay, you got right behind me, right, or right in front of me. The residential, single-family house, the median, single-family house tax bill would decrease by $13 rather than $33. The median commercial industrial would go up by $76 as opposed to the original calculation. So 76 when compared to, so I read this everybody, 144 cuts it in half. The increase would now be a 1.66%. The median residential condo would go from 296 to 303, or up 14.07%. The median small family, small multifamily, which is two or three units, would go from 756, right, to 772, a 16.53% increase. And the large multis would go from a 229 to a 249, or a 3.99% increase.
No, again, just for clarification though, you know, multifamilies, even small ones are getting 400 and up. So they're, the value is similar to that of a median, single-family home.
Sure.
So it's...
I mean, the 1.34, in staying as we were last year, I think the people that you're speaking of to protect, to a lack of a better term, they'll actually see a larger increase.
To the 1.34, so that's why I'm advocating 1.36 so that they don't see...
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were a dick.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I apologize. Oh, I'm sorry. So I, I'm in favor of the town...
You're advocating the 1.34.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm advocating the town manager's position on this. And so my, my question to the town manager was, you, you, I'm sorry, that you've broken it up in a way that shows us all these different subgroups, but we're really only, I mean, we really can only set the rate, the shift between industrial and residential. So when we group multifamilies, condos, and single-family homes together, once all of that is together, what is the average for that whole group? What is the average tax bill increase?
Doing an average of a median is not a method on...
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry, what is, what is the median?
Well, in the past, we would have called that the median, single-family home, right? Now we have it broken out. This year, you broke it out with residential condos, small multifamily, large multifamily. In the past, we just talked about single, median, family, home.
CIP.
CIP.
Yeah, well, the residential.
The reason for, so, two things. I'm not recommending a rate. I provided you material consistent with what you've directed me as a policy up to this point, and that can change. Two, the reason for adding the additional categories is traditionally, single-family homes represent larger aggregate value than the other categories. And when things change, they don't change to this magnitude. And so if we had not, if I had not provided you the condo and multifamily information, it would appear as if commercial was going up and residential was going down. Because we left off the other data, and for the point of transparency and having a sort of robust dialogue about what we're talking about, leaving off the condominiums and multifamilies in this case would have left the impression that commercial was going up, residential was going down, and then the condo folks would have got their tax bills and probably would have had a different opinion.
Right.
So that was the only reason. But normally, Mr. Valancourt is correct, normally we just print median, single-family house. It's just difficult within the category to take those medians and average them off and say, this is...
Well, the median, the median residential, do you, I mean...
I don't have that. Because again, the, a little bit of the difficulty, although it's weighted, is the median value of a single-family house is 467,100. The median value of the condo is 170,000. So again, doing an average of a median, it gets to be a little funny on the math.
But again, for the people at home, because I know this board knows it, the way you value commercial property and residential property is different. It's based on income, it's based on, it's just, it's different. You don't say, well, gee, how can my property be worth this and that? Huge building is only worth, it's done differently. It's done mainly by income. So it's, it's confusing.
Even your large multifamilies.
Even your very large multifamilies, yeah. It's confusing, it's confusing for everybody, but I, I was an advocate for, once we, we got it to a level that seemed to be fair and reasonable, I was an advocate to, let's share the burden. I think it's, I think we're still at a number that is about as fair as we're going to get it. It's going to be, it's going to be a boost for some of the condo people, there's no question about it.
But I think you made a valid point.
But their property's gone up a lot.
Their property has gone up quite a bit, and I think you made a valid point in regards to during the leaner years when the condo market had, you know, crashed, the single-family homes were carrying the water for the condos at that point.
Well, the property, the value was worth it, but still, they were carrying the bills.
I, I agree with what we have, or what our philosophy has been over the last number of years, to, to share the burden between our residential folks and our commercial folks. And I tend to continue to agree with that philosophy.
Just, if it helps, for the sake of, I put in 1.35?
Yeah, we've talked about that. We've done that in the past.
Okay, that's the 8317 split right there, exactly.
Last year, the split was actually 8288. This year, it's 8291, so we're getting into tenths and hundredths. But, but the 80, the 1.35 is a $23 decrease, $10, $10 higher, that makes sense, than the, the single-family home. The commercial is now 1.10, sits between 76 and 1.44. The condo goes from up 296 on the low side and up 303 on the high side to up 300. The small multi is 764 and was 756. And 772, so it sits between the two numbers. You see there's a less dramatic effect on the large, small, multis, and the condos because as a percentage of the overall value within the residential class, they have less overall value. So you don't see a large change with those. But, so anyway, that's what 1.35 yields.
Kind of split the difference right down the middle. It actually makes that 8317 split right now. Exact. I mean, I would be okay with that if we wanted to split the difference. It's not huge in any way, even the 1.36, 1.34s.
To be clear, last year, the actual split was 82.91. At a 1.36, it's 8288. At a 1.35, it's 83. At 1.34, it's 83.13.
There's no motion on the table.
I'll motion for the 1.36.
Want to?
I would have motioned for the 1.35. I would have supported 1.35. I think we'll split the difference at 1.35 and call it a day. But if you want to go 1.36...
I just, I just still think on, I, the condos and the multis, I think that's just, I just don't want to go in the other direction. Even though it's not, in our eyes, it's not significant to some people. Even though it's not, in our eyes, it's not significant to some people, it would be, and then they went a little higher, you know?
It allows us to remain, remain consistent with the split of the burden that we currently give as far as the budget goes.
You know what amazes me? We sit here every year since 1990, and we figure their tax classification, and whenever, whenever we go a certain way to help the residents, we're building on something to help ourselves. There's got to be something wrong with that.
Well, I think that's why, over the last number of years, we've been, tried to be very consistent in, in sharing that burden between the residents as well as our commercial businesses.
Back in 1991, it was even a step, then it moved to '08, and it's been going like this ever since.
Right, to share the burden.
Yeah. Somebody should share my burden.
So we have a motion and a second for the 1.36. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess so.
Opposed? That's a four to one, motion passes. Moving on. No licensing this evening, no old business this evening, we will move on to new business for our five-year financial forecast.
You're going to move up to the podium, one more time.
Okay. I forgot to make an announcement for, we have under communications, I forgot.
You're in the chair.
Well, okay, we're going to do it right now. It's one of those nights. I would just like to remind everyone that there are two units that will be available on May Street. They're open houses, are December 1st, December 1st, 8th, and the 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at, I know they're 5:30, 7:30, 64 May Street, where you can go and see the open, see the house itself, the units themselves, as well as learn about the process. You have to income-qualify, this is yet another joint effort between Bread and Roses Housing and Lawrence and the North Annivale Affordable Housing Trust. So again, those open houses are the 1st, the 8th, and the 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at 64 May Street. And I filled the time, and Andrew is ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. The practice for the last four years are on around December 1st, after the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee has voted on their revenue and fixed cost estimates, and after the Board of Selectmen has voted on its budget policy statement, I provide a five-year financial forecast. The goal is to give you an overview of what we expect in fiscal '17, nothing that's fixed in time, but really the general parameters for dealing with, what we're seeing on the landscape, the fiscal landscape for fiscal '17, and then start to think about how our decisions, both in fiscal '17 and the decisions over the last several years, will affect the future. Now, without boing with all the details, in this particular slide, it should remote, look remotely familiar, it's the Budget Calendar, something that the Board of Selectmen has reviewed and adopted some months ago. It's also included in the Budget Policy Statement, provided to the Finance Committee and the School Committee and the like. It really gives the, the milestones for getting through the budget process. You can see, if you jump all the way to the end, that this year's town meeting is assumed to be May 10th, 2016, and there are 15 or 16 different milestones along the way, we're just beginning in that process. We've checked off the first couple, but we certainly have some work to do between now and May 10th, 2016, approximately six months from now. Particular note, School Committee holds its public hearing on January 21st, the Selectmen approve budget recommendations based upon my budget's middle no later than March 7th of 2016. Finance Committee then holds a series of, of meetings with department heads and town manager and School Committee and other representatives. They hold their public hearing on March 28th, and then we move on to town meeting on March, excuse me, May 10th. So it's always important to begin every financial discussion about the community with an idea of what we're in pursuit of, what we try to strive for every day here and down all, and certainly in the school administration building, and that is the town's mission. I've underlined those things that I think have been the emphasis of this particular board and the community, based upon your feedback and my interaction, interaction with the community. That is, the expectation that we will be professional, that we are cost-effective in what we do, that we provide an equitable level of service, and amongst all, that we deliver that service with a high level of integrity, and then in the vision statement, that we're really all trying to pursue what's in the best interest of this particular community, really wonderful town, and try to find the common good for our residents. So budget pressures, this slide starts to identify some of those things every year we have to deal with to make sure that we stay focused on the plan. I mentioned plan and stability and sustainability and stewardship a lot. Planning is essential, I believe, to making sure that we do what we do well, that we bump into as, as few interruptions to the service delivery that we are shooting to attain, and that we stay focused. And so the budget pressures we deal with, the economic recovery has begun, we see slow, but at least steady, we've removed, moved ourselves from sort of the inconsistent stage, both locally, statewide, and the federal government. State aid is becoming a little more predictable, and it's a little more steady. We don't hear the rumblings at the state level and also internally about some of our local revenue. We feel like we are a little better positioned to predict revenue moving forward. The health insurance problem of several years ago that we worked with the School Committee, Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen to address has been mitigated as, as best we can, and the pension issue is now sort of front and center. I'm not sure it ever went away, but certainly becomes some more in focus. We should expect at least a 7% increase in our pension appropriation. Our pension appropriation is in excess of $4 million. We should expect at least a 7% increase in the pension appropriation each of the next five years, after, I believe, seven years, it declines to about 4%. That is based on a January 1st, 2014 actuarial study. For those of you who watch the stock market, I'm not sure they've met the 8% bogey over the last two years, so we could possibly expect that when they reevaluate and issue a new valuation, that those 7% figures will likely be higher as time goes on. So it's the one thing, we don't have a lot of control of this, we don't have some of the local options we did with health insurance, so we need to be particularly mindful. There were two initiatives by the state legislature to modify pension benefits prospectively. Those have been, those are legislative initiatives that are, will start to take hold, and I think in the long term may help us, but in the short term, we won't see much change. Again, we talked about the sort of steady growth at the state level as well. We do expect, beginning as early as, as December, that the Fed is going to change its monetary policy and increase interest rates. I don't know how that's going to work its way through the first and second quarter of the upcoming calendar year. For us, we borrow money, right, to build things, to reconstruct roadways. We've been fortunate to work in a very modest interest rate climate, averaging a little over 3% on our debt service. That's going to change. So although our interest income from our cash flow will increase, it's modest in comparison to what the cost could be as we begin to borrow money moving forward. So there are two important things. Stay mindful of the percentage of debt service to the budget, which we repeat often, and two, any way we can increase our bond rating means we will see decrease, decreases in the cost of debt service. And lastly, of that group, I think it's important, and I've started to repeat this last year, that we control our own appetite for unsustainable growth, that we recognize that the successes we've had over the last three or four years are exactly that, they're successes, but those successes don't mean that the problem has gone away. It doesn't mean that we stop focusing on the fundamentals that got us here. In fact, I think we need to pay more attention to those, because in times, it's actually sometimes easier to make decisions in difficult times. I know the difficult decisions, but when you know you have to cut budgets, you know you have to cut budgets. Sometimes it's far more difficult to decide how you're going to grow a budget and do it in a way to make sure that we're, we continue to grow a budget in a better way. You'll see the quote at the bottom from Gandhi on several slides. I think it just goes to repeat the fact that every decision we make every year will affect what happens in the future. So these are the assumptions for the, for the spreadsheet you'll see coming up for the pro forma coming up. The tax levy, we're going to assume the tax levy will increase every year by 2.5%. The new growth will remain steady at 600,000. New growth, for those folks who don't know, relates to the new tax dollars generated by new development or improvements in existing development in the community. There are years in which this number is higher, if we have a large development as an example, but those are difficult to predict, and the new growth doesn't automatically appear in the year, you start to see an asset grow from the ground, sometimes it can be a year or two later. So we, we're conservative about making sure we don't try to project when new growth would happen, but let it happen, let it drop to the bottom line and project, project moving forward. The debt exclusion figures in the pro forma are the actual, based upon our debt schedules, should be included in that. The debt exclusions relate to primarily the high school and the purchase of Stevens Estate and Osgood Hill. We'll start to see the roll-off of those debt exclusions, you'll see it on the pro forma later on, in 2019 and 2020, substantially nearly two-thirds of that debt exclusion will roll off by 2020. Local receipts are assumed to increase by 5.3% in fiscal '16, that should be fiscal '17, and 3% annually thereafter. So local receipts primarily driven by something like motor vehicle excise tax and interest income, building permit fees and the like. We generally expect that we'll, we've had a pretty good year looking forward to '17, but generally, those numbers go up at about 3% annually. State aid, again, level funded, approved to the '16 amounts, in other words, whatever was approved by the state in terms of the state aid for fiscal '16, the final state-approved budget, we've taken that number and rolled it forward for fiscal '17. All of these figures have been approved by the Revenue Fixed Cost Review Committee, and then we're assuming going forward that that'll increase by about 2.5% per year. Operating transfers are those that move between the enterprise funds, and again, we're assuming those increase at about 2.5% a year. This is a slide we introduced last year to show the allocation of where we get our funding from. It is a reminder that we are largely driven by property tax of our residential and business owners. We stayed about the same since fiscal '14. These are, I'm not showing you the two and three decimal points of these calculations, but we've grown from fiscal '06, it's 68% of our revenues being generated by property tax, to a number of 77% as early as 2014, and I think that's going to stay that way for a period of time. If I do this out to two decimal points, we've actually seen a slight decline in fiscal '17 to just over 76.5%, but generally speaking, this is the allocation of where we receive our revenues from.
Mr. Chairman, what does the drop from 7% to 2% under other, what is that attributed to?
It's all 2, 7, oh, way back when. For other categories, it really are, it's more a function of that the dollar value stayed about the same, but the other category's increased.
Okay.
It's really, it's, it's the fact that these dollars don't change much, because they're, they're smaller as a percentage of the total. They represented 7%, 7% back of what was a $70 million budget. Those dollars don't change much, but over time, because they're not changing, more needs to come from taxation. So the pro forma assumptions on expenses, health insurance, we assume to increase by 3.75% in fiscal '17, and by 7% from '18 to '21. It should be noted that the days of, the days or decades plus of increasing at 12% plus rates on health insurance are gone. In large part, the 3.75% is still somewhat an indication that we're working off the good news of three years ago, that we're absorbing some of the increases that would happen. Last year, the average increase in health insurance was 6% from the GIC, and yet, our health insurance appropriation didn't show the 6% because we're continuing to use part of the benefit of the savings every year. That, that'll start to fade to a certain extent, but by being in the GIC, we're seeing, projecting to see 6% to 7% increases, we're showing 7% here, when historically, we saw 12% or more in any particular year under our self-insured plan. Should also be noted for employees, they've seen premium decreases by going to the GIC, certainly some out-of-pocket increases, but they've also now, for the last several years, enjoyed the benefit of two healthcare holidays in calendar '16. They've recently approved three healthcare holidays, so for three pay periods, they will have no health insurance deduction, yet continue to be covered. So it's working not only to benefit the community and our departments, but also moving, the employees enjoying a benefit as well. The other employee benefits, which are primarily driven by the retirement, are going up 8.31% in fiscal '17 and 8% in each of the four years. So a total of 8%, of which 7% of that is, is retirement. We have other employee costs, unemployment costs and the like, and those are carried with that, police and fire, medical, those are the other categories in that. Debt service figures are actual, based on existing assumed debt schedules, and they include the ESCO debt, the adopted ESCO plan, which I think came in around $3.5 million, and the facility master plan-related debt. So the reason I bring that up is those programs which yielded savings in departments, the costs of being borne by the town up front through debt service, but the savings are being, being enjoyed by the individual departments. So we didn't move the savings from the departments to cover the debt service. We let the debt service out front, pay the debt service, and then the individual benefits that are yielded through lower utility costs, or from lower rents, if you're not paying rent any longer or staying with the individual departments. General government spending is assumed to increase by 3.5%. Generally, we see, generally, generally, we see general government going up a slightly slower pace than, say, education and public safety. It's a little easy to manage, quite frankly. Some of the departments, the back-office departments, can be a little easier to manage in terms of controlling costs. Support services are those shared services, we call them different things, shared services, support services. Those items, which we have in common primarily between the general government and the school, and we've found ways, we continue to find ways, talk a little bit later on in the presentation, to find, to look at those common resources that we have, and work toward making sure that we find the most economical way of producing those. I would expect that increase, again, 4% for the five-year period. Part of that is some of those resources, if we move, for instance, we're moving payroll from a, a function that was conducted in both the general government side and the school side, as something that is now shared between the two. We're going to move that cost from the general government side into the shared services, that has an effect on the shared services side. That's still a good story, but that's the effect of that budgetarily. We're also seeing the increased cost of implementing Munis as a unified financial software system. School department expenses are assumed to increase 3.7%, which is what went out with the budget documents to all of the departments, 3.7% in fiscal '17, and 3.5% in each of the years from '18 to '21. Again, the purpose of these slides is to generate the actual pro forma and show you what, what happens when we make these assumptions, what we expect to happen over the next five years. State assessments of the charges that the Commonwealth gives us for performing or for providing us services, MBTA is an example of one, mosquito control, another. We expect those to be increased by 4% annually, following the 9% increase this year. Then, one of the non-departmental costs that's driving that, quite frankly, is an increase, a spike in the vocational school costs that we're currently seeing. We just received a bill for fiscal '16 for Essex Aggie. We had an 80,000 bill in '14. In '15, we projected 90,000, because we thought we may see some migration to Essex Aggie with the new facility opening up. The actual bill came in at 136,000, so $46,000 above budget, something we'll need to absorb within the current year. We're also seeing the Greater Lawrence Technical School appropriation, seeing those increase as well from, you know, pretty substantial numbers.
How many students do we have that go to Essex?
Seven.
For 100,000?
For 136,000.
Seven students at Essex Aggie, or Essex, what's it called?
Essex Aggie, yeah, what have they called, they altered the name.
I drive by it all the time.
Yeah, it's Essex.
Beautiful building.
Agriculture and Technical High School. Yeah, so we have seven students at a cost of just under 20,000 a student.
And what about the vocational school?
I don't have the headcount information for that. That, that appropriation is nearing 400,000, 350 and change.
And you don't have...
I don't have the headcount. It's, it's a lower cost per pupil, but it's still fairly...
But it's a higher pupil, but...
Yes. Public work expenses assumed to increase, again, the restless, both public safety and public works, along with the schools, we're assuming 3.7 in the current year and 3.5 in each of the out-years. So now that you can't read this, unless I, it'd be very difficult to read this, so I'll, without going into each line, I might, we'll zoom it in a minute. This begins with the fiscal '16 adopted budget on the far left, showing a balanced budget, $303 left, and then the five years, based on the assumptions from the previous slides, and what this ultimately will result in. Let's see if I can do a little bit of, see if I can work on this. Okay, this may work. Hey, look at that. So without all the labels, the 303 on the bottom left represents basically the balanced budget, the adopted budget in fiscal '16. The 334 and every negative, we didn't, you know, turn them red or anything, but every bracketed figure after that represents the projected deficit based on the pro forma assumptions from the previous page. So even at '17, as we're projecting a 3.7% increase for departments, 3.5 for general government, 3.7 on the rest, we're assuming at this point that we're going to have to find, cover for, manage through, a deficit of $334,000 during the budget development process to make sure that when we get to town meeting, we have a balanced budget. Okay? If you look going to the right, and it's intended to do this, every year it does this, the figures get more troubling as you go to the right, or certainly, you get more uncomfortable with them. So if we were to simply grow the budget at, based on our current assumptions, fairly conservative revenue, but fairly conservative expense, we would expect that we would have to deal with a deficit of close to $4.7 million.
At the same time, that, that actually, our debt exclusion has dropped, will have dropped dramatically.
Correct, yes. Correct, yes. So, I would say, it shouldn't be taken from this that we won't be able to afford what I've projected. It's just, it's intended to take a snapshot of today with very conservative assumptions on the revenue side, and probably moderate assumptions on the expense side, and give you an idea of some of the challenges we face moving forward. Okay? If you look at last year's, it would have showed a balanced fiscal '15 at a deficit in '16. We made it to the town meeting at '16, the budget was balanced. If you look at the fiscal '14 forecast, it would have showed a balanced budget for fiscal '13, a deficit in '14, a bigger deficit in '15. Every year, we work through this process. It doesn't mean these numbers aren't real, it just means things begin to change, and we want to be more conservative as we get closer to out-years. So, at this point, I wouldn't get too concerned about it, but it also is an indication to us, we need to continue to focus on what got us here in a positive way.
So, I missed that, Mr. Manager. So, and prior years when these five-year projections were presented?
Same way.
It was a similar outlook each year?
Yes.
Seeing the peanut gallery nodding, saying, you know, "Don't panic, Phil."
Don't panic. Don't panic.
I was going to blame Stan for all of this.
It's too soon to panic, no.
Yeah.
It's too soon, yeah. The screens, run over, the screens.
Lock the windows.
Yes, I think, so what, the fact you see that sort of steady deficit growth is a
function of compounding decreases, and the fact that our expenses, we're showing expense growth at 3.5%, some categories higher, 7% on retirement, which is faster than we're showing revenue growth. Right? And so, you're going to see that sort of slide. Again, I'm not alarmed by that screen, but I'm also, shouldn't assume that those numbers mean that there's a match, just because every year, we sort of make it to the next year, we cover the deficit, doesn't mean that those numbers just magically go away. They go away because we make difficult decisions to make sure that we're in a better position each and every year. So, this is a percentage allocation pie chart between various categories, all the categories that were listed in the pro forma. Nothing super exciting about this, we're carrying about 7% debt. We talk often within the finance committee, a 5% debt number. That 7% debt number includes the debt exclusion, which is nearly $1.8 million. And so, when you include the excluded debt, which is rates raised outside the levy, that increases that to a certain extent. Public safety is 12%. Health insurance is equal to the public safety costs in the community. It's a sort of an interesting way to look at it. So, group health is equal to public safety.
That's great.
Okay? So, to insure our folks' costs is the same as putting police and fire on the street.
That's great.
As relates to other personnel benefits, which include retirement, if you add those two categories together, in fact, we're beating at 18% for employee-related costs, which again, exceeds public safety, actually would be greater than the public safety and general government together, costs us less than the group insurance and retirement costs and liability costs of the community. So, I show this, again, we talked about this several slides ago, it just gives you a graphical example of what we expect the appropriation to look like, based on the January 1st, 2004 actuarial study. I'd expect this to increase. So, we're going to go from about $4.5 million, 4.4 this year, to close to $7 million by This is the, this is one that was in this presentation last year, but I want to re-present again this year. This is what happens when we do pay attention, we do make difficult decisions, and I think continues to be the reason we've been able to close those budget gaps and have some great success. The decision to migrate to the GIC has reverberated in our budget for the last three years, will continue to do so for the next five or six. The calculated delta between what it would have cost in health insurance versus what it is costing us in health insurance, by 2024 will amount to $11 million in a single year, not cumulatively, in that one single year. So, we need to continue to make those decisions. So, the road, the road to maintaining fiscal stability in the past, this used to be the, told us how to get on the road, I think, I forget exactly what the header is. Now, we're, now we're there, right? We've gotten to the point that we've met a lot of our milestones for financial reserves. We've started to do some interesting things, we've added some service levels back, but we need to be mindful to stay on that. So, the first one is manage those expectations, as Gandhi said, "The future depends on what you do today," right? So, control the cost of employee benefits continues to be, I know there's a lot of repetition in this presentation that's purposeful, because the issues that we faced are issues we faced almost every day. We need to maintain those reserves. We've been successful working with you folks and the finance committee in establishing a financial reserve policy which is thoughtful, not overbearing, does not bring reserves to levels that are extraordinary, or painful, or impactful in an adverse way, either on services, on residents, but we need to make sure we hold those limits, they're important. It should be noted that we had in 2007, 2009, we had negative reserves, negative free cash in two years. Today, those days seem a lot longer than a decade ago, and it puts us in the position to make decisions that we otherwise couldn't make, and I'll show that in a slide in a bit. We need to continue to look for strategic partnerships, I can tell you that since Jen Price has been here, the relationship with the schools is live and well. She's a great partner, she's someone who, we often brainstorm about different ways to do things in ways that improve the entire community. I appreciate the relationship and what Jen has brought to the town in her short time here. We also do that with relationships outside the community. We continue to have conversations with our neighbors about different ways that we can partner to make things more efficient. You know I've been to the point of boredom, resolute on the idea that we need to focus on our infrastructure, focus on our infrastructure. We continue to invest in our roadways at a tune of well over $1 million a year, in excess of our Chapter 90 appropriation. It's important that our residents drive our streets, like to drive our streets, and make sure that the buildings that we function and operate in are not left in disrepair. We need to continue to explore new revenue options. I think one of the options you're going to see in a future slide is the idea of pilot agreements on solar installs and net metering credit arrangements with those same solar installations. Keep debt service in control and continue to use technology. By the way, for those folks who have been using it, the reported system is phenomenal. We're getting great feedback. Community is interacting with us about their concerns and their service levels. Our departments have been remarkable about their response to those, and the communities, communities receive the product well. So, these are just some sort of fancy little shapes, primarily rectangles, squares and triangles, on the different things that we've done over time, just to sort of repeat what most people know. We've purchased our streetlights, we invested in an energy service plan, we're currently in the implementation of an integrated financial software system, we've increased pay-as-you-go financing on our capital initiatives, we've adopted financial reserve policies, we've developed an in-house product to communicate with our residents, we've moved to the GIC health insurance plan, we've adopted, in my opinion, the most efficient and effective facility master plan of anybody in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and currently, we're in the process of negotiating pilot agreements and net metering credit agreements, which will bring additional revenues and reduce costs to the community. So, here are the benefits, to me, most important slide in the presentation. This is what our hard work has meant. From fiscal '09 to fiscal '12, the aggregate increase in budgets was negative 1%. That's not per year, that's total. So, over that four-year period, our budgets went up minus 1%. In the four years following that, our budgets have gone up 15.12%. Now, counting '17, in which the projection is 3.7%. By the way, our reserves have gone from an aggregate, all-in reserve of every possible category, from $4 million during that time to $16 million during that time. We've been able to implement the full-day free kindergarten, which comes with the financial flexibility of being able to forward the cost and then get the benefit later. Could not have afforded that when we had negative free cash, because we couldn't have paid for it. Right? We've allowed departments to retain the ESCO savings, or about $350,000 a year, 260 to the school department, 260, 265, other departments, police and fire and the like, being able to retain their savings.
Great.
We've implemented the third, we've been able to track this down, the third in the Commonwealth, only three, well, I think there's been two since, the third in the Commonwealth Sped Stabilization Fund, it's $750,000. In the three years preceding that, we funded the school budget by adding another $150,000 for sped-related costs. We've been able to manage in-year deficits in a way we would never have been able to do. We covered $2,084,000 worth of snow and ice deficits without the need for an override, or to draw on reserves, or ask residents or departments to stop spending over a three-year period.
It's amazing.
Okay? In fiscal '15, we covered a $391,000 school deficit, largely attributable to sped spending. Our rent expense for $103,000, which was originally in the school budget, we've been able to move that or not take it from the school department by absorbing the debt service associated with the school administration building. We established a capital stabilization fund, which places in $225,000 a year toward infrastructure improvements, and I believe in fiscal '17 and fiscal '18, we'll use that fund to pay cash for the replacement of a field turf fields at the high school, and then start building the fund again for the next project. We've been able to add valuable staff additions, something that certainly didn't happen from '09 to '12, when we were unable to even cover our current costs, and we've implemented a facility master plan, more than $25 million in improvements to town buildings with no overrides, which are really debt exclusions in this case. So, we're certainly not done. We talked about the fact we need to continue, right? We need to continue to focus on those things that have got us here, be mindful of the fact that 3.5% and 4% increases aren't so bad when facing the prospect of having to decrease budgets. We're looking at single-source payroll, something that's going to take effect on January 1st, 2016. We're excited about that, a good initiative between the school and the town, something that I know the Board of Selectmen and School Committee discussed quite a while ago, and we're finally at a point that we're able to do that. We are doing a pilot program with the school department to do the same thing with accounts payable, beginning in January 2016. We hope in the long term that that yields a more permanent relationship, but the pilot is the right way to go. I'm proposing tonight that we take dollars in excess of $150,000 that we receive, have budgeted for, for Medicaid reimbursement, dollars we get back from the federal government for certain students, those costs associated with certain students, that every year, we get reimbursements back from the federal government. We have budgeted on an average basis $150,000 into that revenue stream. I'm proposing that we create a Medicare reimbursement fund dedicated to curriculum within the schools, that when the dollars are above $150,000, those excess dollars, we place it to the fund to be used specifically for investment in curriculum, curriculum to be determined by the school committee and the school superintendent. We continue to pursue and are actively pursuing pilot and net metering credit arrangements with not only the Osgood Solar Project, but with the Brook School Solar Project. We'd expect over the next six to 12 months, those will yield substantial benefits to the community, we're hoping an aggregate of $200,000 annually, to bring in some additional revenues. Additional ideas under review to make sure we continue to talk about things, something that was introduced first by the superintendent, the concept of adding a librarian that would be shared between the schools and our public library, it makes sense to me. I haven't, we haven't worked through the sort of nuances or the specific specifications of how the relationship would work, but we feel like the ability to add some part-time staff to the library, or part-time hours, when combining that, the adding additional library staff, which also could provide technical support within the school system, is something that we could both benefit from, and we'll be pursuing that aggressively. Something that's been thrown out over time is the idea of having a shared in-house town council. We both have town council budgets, the Board of Selectmen controls the town version, superintendent on the school side. This wouldn't mean we'd go away from specialist council on land use or related items, but at least explore the opportunity that would have a, a sort of a generalist, someone who could deal with those day-to-day issues that, on a lower cost-per-hour basis than we've historically done. Again, we're having very preliminary discussions, I need to come back to the board associated with that. So, in the end, this is me trying to sound more intelligent than I am, this is my combination of Gandhi, the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee, and the assistant town manager, all combined.
That's a better attribution.
I didn't want to give myself credit to it. So, this is, so if we take Gandhi's repeated quote, and we modify that slightly, I think it can apply to what we do collectively, in terms of making sure that we maintain the fiscal stability that we've tried so hard, and we've worked so hard to maintain. And that is, just because our current looks better than our past, and we certainly recognize that, right, doesn't mean that our future is still not dependent on the decisions we make today. That's profound for me, I may have to write that down. But I think it's important to recognize that, that it is really too easy sometimes when we get to a good, comfortable spot, to get comfortable about being comfortable, and stop to make the, stop making the decisions that really got us here. We need to continue to focus on that. Things are going well, things can be better. They can't be better unless we have a plan and continue to implement that plan in a way that helps us all. So, that's the goal.
Great job.
Fantastic.
Questions? The first slide.
The one observation that I've made, though, it seems as though as we go forward, it becomes more and more important that we become more and more self-reliant. When I looked at the state aid, when we were at a high of 14% of our budget in 2008, and we have never recovered from that, we're probably at the same level as we were in 2008, is what we're getting now, because it's a 10%.
I would say the superintendent's been tracking this, is that there is a more vigorous dialogue than I've seen around the idea of modifying the state aid formula for education. It's been discussed since '08, but at least at this point, the players involved seem to be players that could influence the outcome. In fairness, the legislature hasn't shown an appetite. In the end of the day, if it's a zero-sum game, and you hand them new calculations which move money between communities, there are winners and losers, and as it relates to the state budget debate on any annual basis, if there are winners and losers in terms of trying to reallocate the same pie, that typically is a recipe for not having any legislation pass, because you have to vote to give up funds from your area to give it to someone else. That has been the fundamental flaw in the discussion about the ed reform formula since the beginning, the conversations, you know, more than a decade ago, or since 1993 when it was passed. But there does seem to be the appropriate players involved to at least move the nut, or possibly, if the state, if things are better on a state level, then new dollars being allocated into the old formula, so the folks that were benefited under the old formula don't lose ground. I think that's possible, probably more so than we've seen, but I'd be surprised if we saw that in the upcoming fiscal year.
But probably the best way to solve that problem is that they take over certain projects versus allocating, saying, I don't know, I can't think of anything, they just would take over for it throughout the state, so then there's really no, it's just fairness. But again, I was really struck by that we were getting 14% of our budget in state aid in 2008, and it's gone down, and now we're at 10%. So, not even taking into account, which I would never have guessed, to try to figure out, is the net present value between those dollars then and these dollars now. I wish they did a little bit better with that. You should be talking to them more, Andrew, and we appreciate every time that you do talk to them.
Yeah.
Well, I think the point that you make, that it's, that we need to be more self-reliant, we've certainly, over the last number of years, attempted to do that, and I want to echo your sentiments in regards to Dr. Price as well, and the school committee, and the finance committee. I mean, we have, over the last number of years, we're one community, we're functioning as one community, and we're doing that well.
Absolutely.
We're doing that well. So, I think the more that we do that, the more self-reliant we become, the more we function as one community, the better the future will be. You know, there are charts that scare me, and I want to push them all away, but again, we do find a way each year to come together and do what's right for the community. So, I'm echoing your sentiment that we, as a community, have to learn to be more self-reliant, not depend on the state, because they're not going to bail us out anytime soon, anyway. And I applaud your efforts, Andrew.
It's a great job.
Just a fantastic job.
And again, echoing what Tracy said, we couldn't do it unless we work as a team, and it's been great. It's been really.
Really good. For quite a while, yes, yes. Something this community didn't see for many, many years, and many years. It's, 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 it's been a nice stretch, and we're going to keep it going.
It'll be good.
Andrew, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking back to last year, and I remember being so impressed and equally impressed this year with everything we've been able to do, and I even see the consistent theme of planning, planning, planning. In fact, last year, you inspired me, after this meeting, to go and actually read our master plan. And so, just thinking about that, I mean, it was, it shocked me, because that master plan at the time, I think it was scanned in, that's how old it is, it's, it's, it started to be written.
It's not even a Word document.
It's, no, it's in a PDF. It started to, it started to be written in 1997, and wasn't completed, I think, until just about 2000. It depended on studies for Main Street that, the studies were prior to my birth. And so, yeah. Actually, that's, I mean, and they were older than Laurie, the study, no, they're not yours, they're pretty, they're older than Laurie, too. they're pretty, they're older than Lori, too. That's a, listen, that's a compliment, you're the next youngest president at this table.
If she was on the School Committee, we wouldn't have a consensus budget, right?
If it falls between Lori and Bill.
No, it's, no, but so, I, and looking at the facilities, I mean, the facilities' master plan has been such a work of art, and has been implemented, and, and, it was supposed to be a compliment, by the way, it was supposed to be. And so, the facilities' master plan, it looked like they had attempted to include something like that in the prior, the prior general master plan. Do we see that being in our forecast in the next couple of years?
Fiscal '17 budget, I've asked Eric Affory to include funding in his budget request to update the master plan.
Fantastic.
Now, that's, that'll take a couple of years. I'm also encouraging the clerk to include funding to codify our bylaws, because I find that similarly, the bylaws, it's not a function of the clerk, it's just over time, when you start at Article 1, and then you go to Article 12, 88, 149, it ends up being, you know, it's sort of an eclectic process. So the, so the master plan will be included as a budget initiative that, with the budget I provide to you, which means the master plan process, typically the help of a consultant, takes a couple of years to do, and to update the '98, '99, 2000 product to something that certainly can be put on Word and copied and posted on the town's website, so we're working on that. We're, part of the reason for requesting that the Board establish a committee to look at the Osgard, was that, I think, that the overlay district in and of itself, if it was incorporated into a master planning discussion, could sort of suck the air out of that room. So if a committee can begin to work on that, it's not chipping away at that, then it can be integrated into an overall master plan, in a way that makes it more thoughtful, so that was sort of the foreshadowing to the fact that we're moving forward with updating the master plan, along with looking to codify the town's bylaws as well.
Vision and planning. Vision and planning.
We're chipping away.
It's seeking out every one of those.
And teamwork.
You know, we're fortunate, because the master plan, it's too bad we are where we are with the master plan in fairness, because if you look at the facility master plan, the playground plan, the open space plan, we have the 125 corridor plan, we have a lot of those fundamentals in place, it just, we just haven't committed the time and energy, quite frankly, to update the sort of, you know, the overarching piece, which is the town's master plan, and that has to be the focus moving forward, it's just, it's too stale to be relevant, right? And so we need to update.
Yeah. I just looked at what it was suggesting for Main Street and development, I mean, it still operates under the assumption we have a supermarket down there, which dramatically, when we lost, it dramatically changed how we could develop downtown. And of course, it assumes that we still have an operating school on Main Street, so it's just changed so much that, I thought I would ask it.
Is, no, now, is this, wait, is this also asked the manager? Because I had a non, non, like, major...
I hope Bill Gordon's watching. Someone actually has an answer.
Well, no, because, you know, so I was, I was driving down High Street, no, we were walking, not driving, walking down High Street during the parade this weekend, and I thought...
Are you young?
I am young, I know, it's crazy.
No, I'm trying to help you.
No, he complimented Lori.
That was a compliment.
I'm younger than Lori, by the way.
Okay.
Wow.
I mean, listen, I could have said it happened the year that Dick graduated high school, I mean...
Those are your friends.
Listen, again, compliment, that was a compliment. So just walking down Main Street, I recalled that we had, we had talked, and this was a big issue for Dawn at the time, that we had put a trial stop sign at the intersection of High and Elm, and we were supposed to talk about it, or we were going to try to talk about it in October. No, October was supposed to be the time that we were going to talk about it, I don't remember what that length was. Well, I just didn't know if we could get an update from the police chief, okay. I mean, I don't know if I'm...
I think it simply fell off the radar, because we had spoken about it, and it was a little too early. No, and I was with you, Don, I was having issues with the three-way, too. So it has fallen off, and I think we can simply ask the chief to give us an updated report on what he's seeing there. I'm a big fan of four-way stop signs, but...
No, I was just curious what the stats were, if he found that that was...
No, I think it just fell off all of our radar.
I mean, what are we looking for, accident numbers, or...
I was just curious if you felt like it enhanced, if it truly enhanced the intersection.
You don't stop going on the low one up here.
Or if perhaps the recommendation was maybe we need a four-way, or, I mean, I don't, maybe it's something like that at all, I was just curious for that update.
Yeah, I think the four-way issue is coming up that hill.
Either way, I was just curious, you know, from a public safety perspective, what, I mean, what the status was, I know we were supposed to get an update, if you, I was curious on the update, I guess we could talk after the meeting, when I know how people's times.
Great. Next meeting date, though, is Monday, November, December 14th, and Dawn, I mean, public comment. Stan.
Way out of order tonight.
I'm way out, I'm all over the place.
I was given a 60-day moratorium for speaking at these meetings.
Welcome back.
Yeah, the months of October and November, but I had a problem with my watch, and it suddenly said December 1st, so I'm going to take that as an omen. I just wanted to remind you all, the Stevens Memorial Library is doing a long-range plan.
I did the survey today.
And I would encourage all of you, you can do it online, you can go to the stevensmemblive.org website, and there's a link there to the survey, or downstairs. In most of our public facilities, there's a paper survey you can take, it's very short, it's very helpful, we're trying to get all the information we can from the community about what they think our library can do and should become.
It came out in the school newsletter today, too, from Dr. Price, and I did it today because it came out.
We're trying to get the widest possible coverage, so we can get the best possible input, so that's one thing. Number two, the North Ann Arbor Historical Society is having its holiday open house this Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00. It's going to be all kinds of, what's that? One of the, yes, I could be, yeah, me and, me and Don are going to be there as historical artifacts, and you're welcome to come and see us, yeah.
I'm not a competitor.
Please, please come and join us, we'll have refreshments, we'll have people dressed in historic costumes, all kinds of good things, is it our gift? This Sunday, December 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., at the Society, 153 Academy Road, in the old center, we have a wonderful gift shop, in case you're looking for, that's a special gift.
Really?
Yes, we do.
Honestly, I'd, I should be embarrassed to admit.
Yeah, 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 no, we have, no, we have crafts, we have books, we have all kinds of great things, if you're interested in a special gift for somebody for holidays, come to the Historical Society.
Did you guys have Cyber Monday, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it was, listen, you had to get on a horse, ride 20 miles, and give your order in, right there.
Let me just add to that, on that same Sunday, I forgot to say this under announcements, the Festival Committee is hosting a pancake breakfast at the VFW on Sunday. The benefits to, to support the Santa Parade for next year, and Santa Claus will be there, from my understanding. So I'm not sure the exact time, I think it's on the website, but, so before you go to the open house, you can have pancakes.
And I think it's early, I think it's at 8:30 over there.
8:30, okay, I'm sorry.
I just want to add one thing about the Town Manager, the one word you haven't used in this presentation that you were schooling us on, sustainability. Sustainability, so it has to be, it has to be sustainable, so, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Sustainability, transparency, those are...
This meeting is my fourth year in.
One last, really? One last thing, Madam Chair.
One last thing.
Well, actually, a couple things. Congratulations to the Festival Committee for carrying on with that parade, we all got a little wet, but it was really fun, and also, and the tree lighting, and the North Ann Arbor merch, thank you. You know, good for them, I know, and it was a tough year this year, but it was still fun, even soaking wet, it was still fun.
We had a brother, so it was good.
I have my bubble on the...